Okay, this regular meeting of the city council will now begin. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Yep.
Counselor Delasola?
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Here.
Counselor Hanlon?
Here.
Counselor Matusky?
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin? Counselor Napolitano?
Here.
Counselor Simonelli?
Ah.
President DiPiero?
Here.
Uh, nine members present, you do have a quorum.
As stated in the prior meeting, Counselor Sani and McKinnon cannot be here tonight. Uh, audience, please join us in saluting the flag.
Let's lead us to the flag. The United States of America, we choose a republic where riches stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, limited, and just as we're all.
Please remain standing for one minute. Uh, the city of Everett lost two special people out in the last few weeks. The first was school committee member Richard Banowitz, as well as council on aging member Grace Mitchell. So please take a moment. Thank you.
Item number one, Mr. President, is an order to all parties interested in the public hearing for one horizon way to have a flammable license to floor, to store flammable products.
Uh, is the petition present?
Is the petition present?
I believe so. Yes.
Could you have the petition before us?
Please just introduce yourself for the record. Yep, there you go.
Stan Shavitz, Eastern Propane, 131 Water Street in Danvers, Mass.
Uh, before the council, if they do have any questions, you want to just briefly explain the petition?
So what we're looking to do is, um, provide propane tanks for the Wind Casino for, um, winter-conditioned heating, so they can continue the building process. We have, um, an application for thirty-five one-thousand gallon tanks. I've been working with Deputy Chris Jewell, and he's reviewed the plan and feels that it's all to code and it's safe, and he has approved it. He, I have a letter from him as well, if you'd like it. Uh, the tanks will be installed on concrete pads. They'll be tied down. Each tank will be numbered throughout the casino, so that, um, if there were an incident, the fire department would know directly where to go.
Okay, Counselor McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, uh, through you to the petitioner. Uh, petitioner had called me last week, and we were able to have a conversation regarding this. I spoke with the fire department about it afterwards, and the fire department, as he said, was fully in support of this. I wanted to personally thank the petitioner for calling me last week to have a conversation regarding this license. I know we have several of these across the city of Everett. Um, I also know that the casino heavily needs this license, um, to be able to pass and rapidly as possible. Um, I could not be more in favor of this license and will be proud to support it to see. Thank you.
Information loss. Counselor Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. Uh, how long do you intend to stay there with, under this operation?
The tanks will be removed, um, springtime, so I would say by June first at the latest.
Of two thousand eighteen?
Yes, and then if, um, if they're still in the process next winter, we may have to put more in, but that'll take care of this year.
Not a permanent fixture?
No, not permanent, temporary.
Thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the tanks are only going to go in once. You're not going to, like, go in and out? You're just putting these tanks, they're going to last from now until June?
We'll put the tanks in and we will deliver propane to those tanks.
You will deliver, and what are the hours of your delivery?
Um, we deliver, we have a, a night shift and we have a daytime shift, so we try to go in on off-hours when it's not so congested.
Right.
Which is in the evening. It's easier for our trucks to get around in traffic.
That's what I was going to say. I, I, hopefully you're not going to be delivering this at seven o'clock in the morning during rush hour, so.
Oh, no.
Okay. And the other thing, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would like to see the copy of that letter before I vote on this.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Napolitano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
How many tanks are there altogether?
There will be up to thirty-five one-thousand gallon tanks.
And will these all be in series, parallel? Will they be in the same area? Will they be moved at different points of the property?
Once they're set in place, they'll stay in that, that spot through the rest of the winter. Um, most of the tanks are supporting, each heater is four-point-five million BTUs, so we would put two one-thousands on it, and that would, with that usage, we would, that would require an every-other-day delivery. So, we're putting, you know, the maximum that we can on each heater, trying not to have to go on-site every day.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions, Counselors? Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to excuse our guest. Thank you very much. All those in favor? Pose the ayes, have it. Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor? Pose the ayes, have it. Public hearing is now open. I'm going to ask anyone in the audience who's in favor, and if anyone is opposed, three times each. Anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in the audience opposed to this petition? Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed?
Second motion.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the ayes, have it.
Favorable action.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. On, on the piece, I, I too would like to thank the petitioner. I did receive a phone call as well to explain the, the process. I just have one quick question. Uh, through you to, uh, Clerk.
Uh huh.
Do you have anything, uh, from the fire department that, uh, states that everything is all set?
Uh, yep, there are all these sign-offs from building, fire, and the tech sector, as we normally do. Yep, and I had a private meeting, uh, with Deputy Detoli the other day, and he explained the process in depth and how, um, they're also on-site, twenty-four, you know, twenty-four-seven down there. So, he felt very comfortable with this.
And with that, I vote favorable action.
Motion was made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Ah.
And President DiPiero?
Yes.
Eight ayes, Mr. President, zero nays.
Petition has passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Counselor DeFlorio is a yes. That is nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
Item two.
Thank you. Item number two, Mr. President, is to all parties interested in the new subsection three to section, of section thirty-one A of the zoning ordinances of the city of Everett. Marrowana establishments forbidden. We need to hold a, um...
No.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing. Is anyone in the audience in favor of this? Is anyone in favor? Is anyone in favor? Is anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed?
Close the public hearing and favorable action on the other.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the ayes, have it. Motion was made and seconded, uh, for favorable action. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Ah.
And President DiPiero?
Yes.
Eight ayes, one nay, Mr. President.
Petition has passed. Item three.
Just so you know, that was enrollment. Item number three, Mr. President, is to all parties interested in the creating of a legislative code for the city council officers.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the ayes, have it. Uh, this is a code drafted by the legislative body, um, to govern the legislative body. I'm going to ask the same thing three times. Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Is there a motion to close?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the ayes, have it. Please call the roll. Counselor Capone?
Uh, I know a lot of time and effort went into it. Uh, there's just one thing that I would want to change. It's on compensation. It's, uh, paragraph five, where it says increases, it's subpart A, "Increases for salaries and stipends of the city council offices shall be determined by..." I want to insert in there, uh, a two-thirds vote of the city council, and then just end the sentence there. And then, on the third line, "All increases shall be allowed following said two-thirds vote of the council," comma, and later on in that paragraph, uh, third from the bottom, change president to council. And other than that, I, I think the rest of it's fine. We could work on it more if we wanted to at another time, but, you know, this, I think there should be an appeal process for, section talks about termination, but as long as that change is in there, then, um, I'm more comfortable. So I would make that in form of a motion.
I second that motion.
Motion was made and seconded on the motion, Counselor DeFlorio?
Uh, now, as far as that, we're voting on this right now, so the salaries are included in this code?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to make an amendment to the salaries. I know, I know the committee worked very, very hard.
Why don't we vote on Counselor Capone's amendments, and then you can make the amendment you want to?
Okay, okay.
Was, you seconded that. Uh, all in favor of the amendments?
Aye.
Opposed? Those amendments have passed. Counselor DeFlorio?
I just feel that we started out a little bit too high. I've done research. You know I am for salaries. I am for paying people for what they work and what they do. Uh, so, I believe that the start of salary should be forty thousand. You do five thousand all the way up and end at sixty thousand.
This is for the office manager position, correct?
This is for the legislative aide, okay? So it would start at forty thousand, it would go up five thousand each step, ending with sixty thousand. That would allow us to hire someone, I know we're going to hire someone with experience, don't get us wrong, but in the future, in the future, you don't know if, uh, if you could start someone less, and then they could go up. If they work towards the goal of making more money, I have no problem with that. If someone comes in with a lot of experience, I have no problem paying them at the, at the top step. I, I have no issue with that. There's an increase, uh, in this, right? The cost of living will go up every year anyway, so it's, we're not stuck with this. But I, I think we need to start low, and, 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 you know, I would hope my colleagues would agree to this.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Thanks, Mr. President. I respect my colleague from Ward Five, but I disagree with her. Um, I know that she does her homework and that she is diligent about her research. Um, I'd just like to see if she, where she got the forty thousand number from, what that's based off of, because I believe that all of our clerk positions in the city of Everett has a different pay scale than that, and if she has information that she could share, where she came up with that, that base for the starting point, I'm just curious of, of where that came from.
Mr. Chairman, I really, I really didn't want to get into that, but the start of salaries are thirty-six thousand, and I have proof of that. Okay? I, I actually have proof. So if you do your research and you do your homework, I didn't start at the thirty-six thousand. I started at the forty thousand. You just can't throw numbers out there without doing your homework. I have proof. I have the charts here. I have the charts from the state. I have the charts from the city. Okay? They started thirty-six thousand. I started at forty thousand, because I understand that we, we, we're going to give, we're going to give the person a lot more work. They have to do a lot more research. So, if he wants the facts, then we can lay this over. We, we don't have to pass this till next year. This has only been on the table for six months. But this is what I'm basing it on. I base it on research. I base it on salary charts. So.
Counselor Napolitano?
I mean, I, I concur. I think the salaries were, were high. I've said this through the, the committee meeting, and I even, we've motioned and made the change, and it was changed back the last meeting. Um, you know, we have a responsibility to look at what the, what these type of positions pay in the private sector. Now, most of us have only worked in the private sector. To make forty thousand dollars a year, I think if we look at the average income of the average Everett resident, you find that that's on the high end, especially if we're, actually, the numbers that are in there right now are on the high end. Um, you know, I've worked with bank presidents that didn't make the kind of money that this position is going to be paying. I, uh, my, my wife is an office manager at a law firm. I know what kind of work she does in the course of a day. She doesn't make anything close to this kind of money, you know? And, and the thing is, we do have a responsibility. It's not about what other people make. It's about what we compensate per, person for fair market, you know, value of what the, of the job they do. And, and for that respect, in that, in that area, we do need to have, we need to be cognizant of what other people make in other parts of the, uh, of the state, not just what they make up here at City Hall. We can't control what the mayor's office pays his employees. That's his job. He's there to oversee to make sure he's getting his money's worth. We, on the other hand, are in a different position. Every one of us are, 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 are part-time, even though we, we work at a full-time level. We can't be here to make sure that the person we're putting in that position is earning fifty grand, fifty-five thousand a year. And I honestly think for, for, this is just way too much. Um, so I, I will be supporting a reduction of this. I don't think that the amount they were quoting is, is, is fair, is, is reasonable for the type of workload. So I think it's over. And for that, and, uh, you know, I've been in the private sector my entire life. I, 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 I seek from experience. I've hired people before in other jobs, in the banking world. I know what people would, would do. I know what the kind of money they make. This is high. And I think that we have a responsibility, especially if we're talking about money that we're personally spending on our own department. We need to make sure that we are not giving away the farm. Okay? So I'll be supporting a reduction as well.
Counselor Capone, be the last speaker, then I'm going to ask for a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, through you, uh, if somebody from the committee could, could answer this question, or a city clerk, or whomever, uh, with regards to the salaries, we've got numbers, and then they bump up. The, the numbers across the top, one, two, three, four, five, are those steps? Are those years? Those are steps. Okay, so you could have someone, it looked like the starting salary was forty-nine, nine-eighty before the amendment. Uh, so you could have somebody who comes in and right off the bat, the steps would increase by, uh, would be experience or would be service?
It's, it's usually by service is how the city does it. So every year of service, it goes up, um, by step. That's how the, um...
Okay, so...
Clerical is.
When the committee was putting this together, rather than having a hard and fast number on, uh, that particular position, because it's really, I think, the only one that they, they have that ability, what, was there discussion about a range versus a, a hard and fast number? Because no two candidates are going to be the same. You're going to have folks who apply for the job. Some may be much more qualified than others. Uh, someone who's under-qualified shouldn't come in at a higher number. And by the same token, someone who's over-qualified shouldn't come in at a lower number. So I don't know if, if, uh, the committee had considered a range as opposed to a hard and fast number.
They, they, they did not. They, I think we, they went off what I wrote.
If I could, I believe the original amendment was to create that as a range, and we've reduced those figures by five thousand in that range. So the original proposal that came out of the work-study group was forty-five for the minimum, and, uh, I'm sorry, I don't have the...
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four for the high end. Uh, that was amended back to the numbers you have in front of you when it came before the committee, uh, to put, to send it to the floor. So, we were trying to find some type of, of, of range in there.
Okay, so, that, I'm just a little confused still, because we start off, unless it's built in here as a range within that frame, which I think would probably be the better way to go than a hard and fast number, uh, because right now it's in there at forty-nine-nine. And if we go with the amendment, we're dropping it to forty. And you don't know who's coming through the door. So, I would prefer to see it a range. I have no problem starting the range at forty, or thirty-five, and then have the range go up. And then, based on the individual candidate that comes forward, go from there. I just don't know how we get that to that, this point with, with the committee, because I know they put a lot of time into it. And I'm looking at it at this point, and I just want to make sure that we're as fair to, um, any potential candidates, and, uh, being mindful of taxpayers' money, the part, the private sector, the public sector, everything that was discussed here. So, if there's a way to tweak this to make it a range versus a hard and fast number, that's the way I would do it. And I've got no problem dropping it below forty, as long as the range is there, so you have the ability to set the salary, um, commensurate with the experience of whoever you might be inclined to hire.
Counselor DeFlorio, only because it was your amendment, and then please...
Okay, the, the reason why I did this is because I want everybody to understand, we don't have to hire a person at forty thousand. If the person has experience, we can hire them at sixty. We can hire them at fifty-five, okay? If you hire them at the top step, I understand they have no other place to go, but there's a raise in here. They get the cost of living raise.
Right.
So if someone comes in that's highly experienced, and we decide we want to hire them at sixty, because they're worth the sixty, I have no issue with that. All right? So th, this is a range. There is a range here, because we may not hire someone at forty thousand. So the bottom line doesn't matter. The money is there. It's, it's, the range is there. If someone's worth fifty thousand, if someone's worth fifty-five thousand, somebody might be worth more than sixty thousand, but we're letting them know we're not going over sixty. That's, that's the top.
Yep.
The top is sixty, and you're going to get your three percent raise. If you don't want the job, then that's it. So...
If the amendment allows that kind of maneuver with the, I think, I think we should. I second the, the forty. I think we, we go with that, so. I'll second the forty.
Forty is, is the lowest, and sixty is the highest.
Motion was made and seconded. I'm going to ask for a roll call on the amendment. Counselor?
I know they'll receive some guidance from the city clerk's office and everything, you know, but still, the person is alone. They work alone. They work under the, the authority that we give them, the rules that we give them, and the jobs that we give them, and they have to finish it on their own. They can't say, "I can't do this. Will you do it for me?" Because there's no one else there to do it. And that's why the higher salaries are the place that we want to go, because we do want to attract a better person, you know? And, um, I know, and, and Counselor DeFlori, you know, her, DeFlorio, her last, uh, uh, range is, is higher than what's, what's on, on the page here, you know, which is good. So, we could actually hire someone, like she says, at, in, in state, in grade five, which is, which is higher than this, although I like it as it is here, you know? So, um, I just want to know that I, I want, what you, what do I feel about it, and what we should all feel about it, you know? So, and with that, I'll, I'll rest, and so that you probably know how I'm going to vote. But anyway, so, thank you anyway for the time.
Thank you, Counselor. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
This, the...
We have to vote on your amendment first.
We're voting on the amendment. We're not voting on the order.
On the amendment right now.
Once the amendments pass or field, then we'll go on to favorable action. So, the amendment to change the salary range, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
One moment. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
No.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
No.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Si, Simonelli?
Ah.
Yes, and President DiPiero?
Yes.
That is three, four, seven ayes, two nays.
The amendment was approved. Favorable action is amended?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action as amended. Please call the roll one more time, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Ah.
And President DiPiero?
Yes.
It's nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
Has passed. Item number four.
Yes. Item number four, Mr. President, is an order to all parties interested in the petition from National Grid of North Andover, Massachusetts, that it desires to construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way, always along Garden Street.
The petitioner is present. Is there a motion to have him before us?
I don't know.
Motion made and seconded to invite the petitioner forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the ayes, have it. Hello again. Please introduce yourself.
Sure. Good evening, Counsel. My name is Mike Cordima from National Grid Electric at one-seventy Medford Street in Malden. The petition that you can see, um, I, I have a rough drawing, if you guys want to look at this in lady. Um, we want to set an inline pole in order to accommodate a switch. We have two separate feeders, one from Everett and one from, from Malden, and at that point, we want to join them on a switch, so that if this end fails, we can pick them up. And if this end fails, we can pick them up. So, and also the customer, um, we're going to be removing some step-down transformers to create four, four-thousand-volt primary. We're going to get rid of that and put a siphon in across the sidewalk to a customer that wants a pad-mounted transformer for service. So, we have to install this mid, mid-span pole set for that switch. Um, pardon the drawing, but it gives you a rough idea what's going, going to happen out there on that sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hanlon?
I'm sorry, three of us, Chairman, to the petitioner. I'm looking at the chart, and I'm looking at the description on the calendar. It doesn't say anything. You're putting a pole in?
That's correct. The red, the red thing is the pole for the switch.
Okay, yeah, but it doesn't say anything about a pole over here. That's what I'm saying, in the petition itself.
Is that this, that you're reading?
Well, the one I have. I don't know.
Okay.
It depends on how the paperwork is filed with the clerk. Is it in accordance with what he's looking to do, aside from how it reads on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's, is it, is there going to be a pole there?
Yes, on, on this, this is a sketch we submitted to, to the city.
The actual, the actual order is, is here. But that, they, they just write, yes, yes. J.O. Pole on Garden Street, beginning at point approximately three, thirty feet north. It, we have the exact language. On the, on the agenda, just know that it's always just a brief description of what it is. We don't write the whole agenda piece.
Okay, and then also, it says you're removing the pole.
I know. I'm going to be removing the equipment on the pole.
Okay, and that's going to come forward to this pole?
No, no, there's a brand-new type of, uh, aerial switching device on the new pole that you can see there. The other one, that customer down below there with that, that low-profile building, we're going to give them a pad-mounted transformer, and we're going to run the conduit across the sidewalk from that pole, roughly four feet or so. roughly four feet or so.
Okay, okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. Looking at the schematic here, the photo, I see that you're removing that equipment. You're going to install load brake equipment on the, on the new pole.
Yep.
How big is that? What are you looking at for dimensions on that? In comparison to what I'm looking at?
Okay. See, see the, the front pole with the crossarm structure?
Yep.
It's about that big.
Okay.
It'll be at the top, and it'll, all the primaries will be connected in.
Will they be enclosed like the poles we're being removed from? Or are they going to be straightwise?
It's actually one complete unit.
Okay.
And they have three separate devices. And it's either going to be radio-controlled, or they'll have a man out there that's going to just pull it and all close it, one way or the other.
Okay. So from the ground level, it'll look like a box enclosure?
Not, not so much a box, but like the crossarm setup that you can see.
Okay.
It's pretty open.
Okay. Oh, I see, like the, it looks like a cylinder. Cylinder-shaped?
Ah, you got me there.
Okay. It looks like a stick of, for bad, bad yours, but it looks like a, like a stick of dynamite with some wire coming out of it. Is that, that's the cylinder I'm looking at? Will they look like that?
Oh, that? No, no, no. That's, that there is, that's that fiber optics stuff.
Okay.
Ours is a switch right at the top where the crossarms are located.
Okay.
You see that?
Oh, just the little, the little section pieces?
No, it's a, it's a big control thing. It's going to be mounted on the pole.
How, how big is that? And how high?
About the size of those crossarms that you can see.
Okay. All right, so it's, it's that size? And it's, is it that high?
It'll be at the top.
Okay.
So what it will be is...
The one I'm looking at, it'd be the same, same thing like that. So it's, the one that's there is going to remain there? So you're going to have them pretty close together?
Yes. It's what we call a mid-span. And that's, would be the only way to accommodate that. It's an interesting idea.
Okay. And just from my own knowledge, how often do you need to go back and inspect these? What's the average lifespan on a pole setup like this? Because you have a lot on it. So what's the typical lifespan before you have to go back, readdress it, determine if it's, I mean, is it annually, every couple of years?
You mean the equipment itself?
Yeah.
They're pretty self-managing themselves. The new ones, they have these little electronic sensors in them where they can actually read them, so...
Okay. And if they malfunction, that's when you address them? Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. President. I have any other questions?
For any further questions, counsel. Is there a second? Motion made in second to excuse our guest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Move open public hearing? Motion made in second to open the public hearing. All in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it. Anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion made in second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it. Motion made in second for favorable action. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio? Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin? Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Aye.
President DePiero?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Petition has passed. You're welcome, sir. Is there a motion to open public participation? Motion made in second to open public participation. All in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it. Counselor Napolitano, if you wouldn't mind, I believe the sign-in sheet is on Counselor DeFlorio's desk. And how many speakers are there on the sheet, counselor?
There are five speakers on the, on the sheet, starting with Christopher Connolly.
Okay, Mr. Connolly. Every speaker gets two minutes. Just so you know, Mr. Connolly, we can listen to you, but our rules don't allow us to engage back and forth. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody in the council and citizens of Everett. My name is Christopher Connolly. I live at 788 Broadway. I'm the homeowner there. And I'm here to state my opposition to the proposed development as it stands now for the current site of the former St. Teresa's Church. Reasons being, the development is in clear violation of numerous city ordinances, and it is too large of a scale of project for the neighborhood. I'm sure most of you are aware of this, this development that's coming down the road. A company by the name of The Neighborhood Developers wants to build a 77 apartment building, five-story building with an East Boston Health Clinic on the first floor, which will have a negative, major negative impact on the neighborhood, including parking, where the streets are already jammed and overflowed with cars from this, will be overflowed from this project. It will also cause a public safety situation with the fire trucks, ambulance, police vehicles, trash pickup, and snow removal. The parking in the neighborhood has already been negatively impacted by the bus lane, which has forced residents that live on Broadway to find alternate parking on the east side of Broadway or into the congested streets. A housing development of this magnitude will, will have a major negative impact on top of the current major traffic issues we already have. Currently in the neighborhood, we have daily, weekly traffic from the following: Everett High School. We have students, teachers, and support staff. The Shute Library, which has no parking. Oliveria's Restaurant. Ward's Funeral Home. Zion Baptist Church. Polk John High School. Lafayette School. As well as the normal residential traffic on every street surrounding this potential 77-unit project. Also, the Wynn Casino will be completed in the near future, bringing increased traffic on Broadway. City ordinances were put into place by the city government in order to assure that developers like this wouldn't come into Everett and try to jam a project this size into the dwelling district neighborhood in which I live. The question I have is, who is the city looking out for? The residents? The neighborhood? Or the developers? Also with this project, they want to put an East Boston Health Clinic. We have the wonderful Cambridge Health Alliance Wyndham Hospital right up the hill. I don't see any reason for having a, a health clinic on Broadway. And I spoke to one of the representatives from this project, and he told me, "Oh, it's not just for Everett people. We'll be bringing in vans of patients daily from Chelsea, Revere, and East Boston to Broadway Everett." Great. Common sense tells most people that this project is too large for this, this neighborhood and this land. I have seen most of the projects that the Neighborhood Developers have built in Chelsea, Revere, which are, for the most part, three stories high, not five stories high, and have approximately 35 to 40 units, not 77. They should treat our neighborhood and our city the same. The Neighborhood Developers, along with their architects and engineers, can easily redesign this project to meet the required city ordinances, which would establish a working relationship with their potential future neighbors. I, myself, am proud of the job that the Everett Zoning, Planning, and Appeals Board does. It's a very important job. But we have to remember, while we plan for the future, we must also remember the current residents and their quality of life. In closing, I am not against developing this project, but I am against the scope of this project in a neighborhood on Broadway that already has a major traffic issue where parking is at a premium. I normally don't read a prepared speech, but I didn't want to miss anything and leave anything out. Basically, I've lived in Everett 51 years, and this development would change all of North Everett, Broadway. It took me a good while to get from my house, 788 Broadway, to City Hall. So you're going to put 77 units in there with, along with the cars and the people that are visiting them. I know a lot of you members are for this, but you have to realize, it's not 30 units or 35 units. 77 units, five stories. Go look at a five-story building. Go to the corner of Gledhill and Broadway. There's a three-story house there. Add two more stories on that. It'll cast a shadow on Broadway. I live across the street. I know everybody that lives up on Gledhill, Wilber Avenue, and Stevenson Avenue, and all the streets in between. So, all I'm asking, if you have a voice and you want to show up at the appeals board meeting, it's the next Monday, the 18th. And like I mentioned, I was at the appeal board meeting last Monday, and they do a great job. There was a gentleman who impeded the property line of his neighbor, and they didn't give him the variance for, for one incident, six to eight inches over the line. This is like over 30 to 40 violations of the city building ordinances. So as we welcome the construction, we don't welcome the size of it. So I thank you all for listening, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Salvador Lopez.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening. I'll be acting as the interpreter for the board. Excuse me, the city council.
Just have to slide the button on the back of that microphone to turn it on.
This one?
No.
Okay. See the green?
It's on? Okay, it's on.
Buenas noches.
Good night.
My name is Salvador Lopez, and I'm resident of Everett. I'm 17 years old, living here. I'm here tonight to support the DACA and TPS. I want to help my community. I'm also an immigrant. I want to help these people who need help. I also want to let them know that I'm a member of the Catholic Church here in Everett, in San Antonio. The Hispanic community is very large. And they have a lot of problems.
Hello, my name is Salvador Lopez, and I've been a resident of Everett for 17 years. I'm also a member of the religious community here at the St. Anthony's Church. And I'm here speaking to you today, this evening, in support of the TPS and DACA resolution. I'd like to also say that the Hispanic community here is very big, and I self-identify as an immigrant as well. And I would like to say that the problems brought forth by the current political atmosphere are, impact the Hispanic community negatively.
I also want to let them know that I'm also a head start student in Somerville. And I see how the children are so small. They are experiencing a lot of trauma. It's very difficult. And I want to tell them tonight that the DACA members have experienced that. And they can be professionals in this country that will be useful to the nation.
I'm also a teacher. I teach pre-K with the Head Start program. And I've noticed that a lot of the political climate has really traumatized many of the little children that I work with. Along with that, a lot of the DACA recipients are, like you and me, professionals. And this would negatively impact their ability to work and contribute to society as well.
I also want to let them know that people who aren't family members come to me to ask me if I can take care of my child if something happens in my work. You can't just custody, but allow them permission in case they need something. I'm responsible. It's very sad.
She'd also, I would also like to say that I've had instances where friends of mine have come to me and asked me if I would take charge of their children in the event that something may happen to them, such as a deportation. And to me, it seems like a very difficult choice for a parent to say, to give a stranger, not even just a family member or someone that they grew up with or trust, the care of their child based on the fact that they do not have a stable future or legal status.
I also want to congratulate them because we hope that you, as people who are closest to these politicians, talk about the situation. And this is nothing. This is nothing. There are a lot of people who are also approaching the border and are having a lot of difficulty with their children here.
And she also, I would also like to thank you all for taking the time to listen to me, especially as politicians who are, act as the voice box for the community's problems. And I'd also like to say that there are a lot of problems happening right now, especially with children crossing the border, and this affects them just as well. And so she'd like to say that as well.
I don't know if I have more time.
Do I have any more time?
Unfortunately, it's getting close. We do have three more speakers.
Okay.
I apologize.
Buenas noches, gracias.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Joaquín Rivas.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Joaquín Rivas. I live in 94 Malden Street in Everett. I've lived in Everett for 12, for 12 years. And I am a homeowner. I also love to unite as brothers of the carpenters, of junior, of America. And I have worked in installing floor for 17 years. I have two sons who are 11 and 13 years old. They attended to George Gavering School, and I play soccer twice a week. I have, I'm here tonight in support of the TPS and DACA resolution. I'm an immigrant myself. So I've lived in here. Life felt in Everett is great city, and, and that the Everett Public School system is excellent opportunity for my children to participate in. I'm an immigrant to U.S. because I, I am the oldest of four. And I can, in hope, of providing for my family then were left back home. Particularly, particularly my mom. The plan was for me to be here the longest two years, and then return back to El Salvador. Well, I was here and have worked in El Salvador. Accuring where many Salvador were great temporary protected status, TPS. And then I applied to the program. Well, I've lived here. I then have my family and sisters. Sisters, Wonka Hill Community College, or English course. As a father of two and a husband, I am very frustrated that TPS school possibly end for many hard-working families' life and my own. I've lived, I've lived here more than half of my life, and I can't, I can't imagine returning back to El Salvador and starting from a scratch. Who will support my two sons if I have to go back as elected officer? As, as for your support is taken into account immigrants' families living in your city, who are also experienced excellently and fear of them to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Karen Flores.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Karen Flores, and I have been living in Everett my whole life. I've been attending Everett Public Schools since I was four years old. And I'm in Everett High School, and I'm a sophomore. My parents and my brother are immigrants that came here from El Salvador. And I have many friends and many family members who are also immigrants. And considering the TPS and the DACA being expired soon, like everybody that I know that are immigrants and have parents who are, who don't have stable documents, are scared that one day maybe like they'll come home and their parents won't be there. Or one day they're gonna be sent off to a place that's no longer their home because this is their home. And I just came here today because I wanted to know what you all, as elected officials who represent us, make sure, will do to make sure my family and my friends feel safe in the city that they've known all their lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Joel Rodriguez.
Hello. Try to push it. Okay. Good evening. My name is Joel Rodriguez and I'm 18 years old currently. I've lived in Everett all my life. Right now, I'm studying in La Salle College for sports management because I want to be a soccer agent because I like it a lot. I'm also working part-time to support my studies. I've gone through the Everett Public School System since I was young. And I attended Pioneer Charter School of Science, which is like Broadway. I was on the soccer team. I also was captain of the soccer team. And I also got a scholarship for my performance on the soccer team to go to La Salle College for the D3 soccer. So, my parents are both TPS holders from El Salvador. And as you know, the country is watching, watching whether or not TPS will end for many immigrant families across the U.S. Recently, my grandfather passed away. And because of my parents' status, they are not able to travel to Belize where he's located right now for his funeral. All of my father's side of the family are there and need his support. But because of my father's status, he will not be able to say his final goodbye to his father. As a son, this makes me feel very devastated that my father has not been able to say goodbye to his own dad that he hasn't seen in more than 10 years. Imagine trying to console a weeping man. To tell him that everything's gonna be better, but you know, like, not saying goodbye to your father will always linger in your mind and have an effect on him. I can't imagine being in the same position or other families like that, myself or going through a similar situation. How would you feel if you lost someone close to you and were unable to attend their service and say at least one final goodbye? As elected officials, I urge you to support these hardworking immigrant families living in Everett by passing the TPS and DACA resolution. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker, I believe. Make a motion to close public participation.
Motion made and seconded to close public participation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, could we please take item 25 where everybody is here?
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item number 25. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Our clerk will be right back. Council McGlaughlin?
Thanks, President. Mr. President, I just want to, again, we have heard week after week from many of our residents across the city of Everett and how devastating this item could become for them and their families. I know that each of my colleagues take what they have said to us week after week very seriously and we've listened to them closely. And many of us have spoken to them privately and publicly. I, tonight, am very pleased that I can take this vote. It's an honor to be able to take this vote this evening. I hope and pray that this will go very far and will be able to impact in a positive manner. And I also just want to thank our state senator, Sally Domenico, who's been here week after week in support of this and is here again this evening in the audience to be able to see us take this final vote. But I know I join with my colleagues tonight and being proud to be able to take this vote in support of the families of Everett. It's a job that we're elected to do and will continue to do, is to protect every resident in the city of Everett, no matter of their status. It doesn't matter. We're here to protect them and we'll do our job always.
Council Napolitano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A motion for favorable action on this item. I think this is a strong stand from the city council. I've lived in Everett almost 60 years. I'm a second-generation Italian-American. My grandparents were immigrants. They came here seeking a better life. Never in my wildest dreams of being a parent would I ever dream that people would be living in our community afraid. And what are they afraid of? They're afraid of the rhetoric that's coming out of the White House. Okay? What is it that we're fearful of these people? They're hard workers. They're taxpayers. Many are citizens through their, through their families. You know, it's just ridiculous that, that we've come to this point, that we all have to take a stand. You know, there are no differences here and there shouldn't be any differences here. These people live here, they've chosen to take Everett their, 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 their home. The same as many of our families have in the past. My grandparents came here just prior to World War II, being Italian-Americans. My father used to tell me how much my grandfather lived in fear. And it never really meant as much to me as I'm seeing the faces and the names and the people that are coming up here and talking about their own experiences. I fully support this and I fully encourage my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Council DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I really feel for these people because I am an immigrant. I came here when I was seven years old and I know how, exactly how they feel. It's difficult. And I am in full support of this and I know my colleagues are in full support of this because how could you be against something like this? It's inhuman. So, tell Washington to do their job and get this done. And this is the message that we want to send to Washington because we can do all the resolutions in the world, but we can't change the law. If we could, we would do that. Unfortunately, it's Washington's job. So I hope this reaches Washington and they'll listen to this tonight. Or maybe we should make a tape of this and send it to Washington. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with everything that everyone said. I think every one of us here is maybe, if not an immediate immigrant, one removed. But before we talk on it, I'd like to have our clerk read it so it'll actually be in front of us.
Yes. Item number 25 is a committee report from Legislative Affairs and Elections on a resolution offered by Councilor Anthony DePiero as president, a resolution in support of TPS renewal and DACA legislation.
Second motion. On the motion, Councilman Matuski on behalf of Councilman Simonelli.
On behalf of Councilman Simonelli, I just want the, the people in the chamber to understand that he has a speech impediment and he's unable to speak. And his comments are that we have to take care of our home first. And he'd like to see Everett, keep Everett Everett. And those are his comments, that's what he wrote down. That's how he feels. But I'd like to personally say, Mr. President, that, you know, I've been blessed to reach out to the immigrant community in the city, the Brazilian community, the Haitian community, very active. And I want to wish these people the best of luck. I know this is an extension of their staying power to be here, another 18 months, I believe. And, you know, my goal is that if you're here, I don't know what the, what the process is, and I should, but, you know, years ago, I know when people came here, they became citizens after a certain point. And they salute the flag and they become a citizen. They're eligible to vote and, but it seems to me that after 20 years, I, don't you become a citizen? You know, I, I just have that question in my mind. At a certain point, are you able to be processed and become a legitimate, legal citizen? And then we move forward from there. But I do support this. And I know that there are hundreds, maybe thousands of residents in this city that work and own homes. And their children study here in our schools. And they're a big part of our community, but, you know, I know that there were, I have friends whose parents came from Italy and they're still not citizens. So, this isn't something new. But you don't hear as much as you do now. But at a certain point, I would hope, because, you know, when I was a state representative, one of the proudest moments I had was when people came to the State House and were sworn in as citizens, salute the flag, and they're 100% Americans. And of course, you have respect for the other countries. And I always have. My grandfather came from Poland to Chelsea. My mother came from Wales. Her, her grand, my grandparents came from Wales. So, I mean to say, everybody here came from a different spot. But, you know, at a certain point, and I appreciate them, they've been here week after week, and I want to apologize, we had that rule, was it 19 that we had?
18.
18. And we should have voted on this at the last meeting, but here we are tonight. But I will support this. Thank you very much.
Councilor Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things I want to say. And I want to say them to the people that are out there. There's a part of this federal regulation that says that you are not allowed to become citizens. If you want to fight anything, that's what you have to go and fight. Because in 18 months, you're gonna be right back sitting back here again, asking us to make some more regulations for you. You have to get out and get that clause out of that federal regulation. Never mind the 18 months, that doesn't mean much because you'll get that. But the thing you have to do is get rid of that clause that says you're not allowed to become citizens. You should be allowed to become some citizen. That's your job. That's what you're gonna have to do. With that, I have nothing else to say.
Councilor Delasola?
I want to echo the words of my colleagues. It's great to be a role model on this vote tonight. It's not just my colleagues here voting on this. It's the police department, the school department, the mayor's office, we're all in this together. This vote tonight would, excuse my voice, I'm losing my voice there. This vote tonight is only a temporary fix, like Councilor Hanlon said. So, once this, this passes tonight, we're gonna really work hard together here to keep this going. Because like Councilor says, 18 months, you're gonna be back with this. We have to stop it. Once we vote this tonight, let's keep moving, keep the ball rolling down the hill. But I'm in favor of this also. Thank you.
Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also support this piece. As you know, I was the one that identified the rule. And it wasn't a rule I created, it's a rule that existed. And that's why it has to go there. We are a nation of rules. And I knew from the moment it was referred that it would come back with full support. I never questioned that for a second. I know that everybody in this chamber has the best interests of everyone here at heart. We have, as I said earlier in my statements, we've all been affected by this. My grandfather came from Italy. My grandfather helped build Wellesley College. So people have gone on to do wonderful things coming from other countries. We're a very welcoming community. We welcome everyone. And we are collectively residents and citizens of Everett without distinction or designation from where you are. We are in it together, we're here collectively. And now that it is back from committee, I will wholeheartedly support this piece. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilors. The motion was made and seconded for favorable action. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's a resolution, you don't have to...
It was requested, so we will.
But they requested, you can...
Roll call vote, please.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor Delasola?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
No.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
I heard that. Eight yays, one nay.
Resolution has passed. Mr. President, suspend the rules and take item number seven, please. Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number seven, Mr. Clerk?
Item number seven is an order offered by Councilor Anthony DePiero as president to promote Patrolman Jeff Gilmore to sergeant in the Everett Police Department.
Favorable action. Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor Delasola?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio? Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Aye.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
Nine yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Congratulations, Sergeant. Please step forward.
Have you do it right here so we can... How you doing, Jeff? After I say aye, say nay. We're gonna do that three times, alright? You ready? Give everybody a chance to come up and take some photos.
If any family members want to get closer to take photos, please feel free to do so. You can come within the barrier there.
Even better. Alright, so are we ready? Get after me. Aye.
Aye.
Jeffrey Gilmore? Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll faithfully and impartially?
That I'll faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a sergeant in the Everett Police Department?
As a sergeant in the Everett Police Department.
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding?
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules?
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations?
Regulations.
Laws?
Laws.
Ordances and charter?
Ordances and charter.
Of the city of Everett?
Of the city of Everett.
So help me God?
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Jeffrey Gilmore?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance?
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I'll support the Constitution of the...
And I will support the Constitution of the...
Of the Commonwealth. So help me God?
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Jeffrey Gilmore?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance?
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America?
To the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Item five.
I have a signing sheet, so... Everybody sitting down here? Mr. Chairman, if we could please suspend the rules and take items number 32 and 33 collectively?
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item 32 and 33 collectively. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number 32, Mr. President, is a committee report from the Public Utilities Committee on a resolution offered by Councilor Richard Delasola to invite Dan Cameron from National Grid to explain the reason why equipment is left overnight and on weekends and taking up so many parking spaces. Item number three is also a committee report...
Thirty-three.
Huh? Thirty? Item number 33 is also... Item number thirty-three is also a committee report on public utilities on a resolution offered by Counselor Richard Delasola to invite Dan Cameron up to give information on the upcoming work for the winter season.
Counselor Delasola.
Good evening, Mr. Cameron, how are we doing? You're good.
It's on, right?
Yes.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Dan Cameron, I'm with National Grid with offices at 170 Metford Street in Malvern.
All right, I'll start with...
Joanne Damar.
Item thirty-two. I know we have a lot of work going down on Broadway and all through the city of Everett all season so far. My questions are, I know it's hard to leave, you don't want to bring the equipment back and forth, but I know that some locations, the parking equipment tours a corner of an intersection, and it's difficult to make the turns as it is with parked cars, but with the equipment parked there, it's just they're taking up three or four parking spots at a time, and Everett's very tough to park as it is. So, I'm just asking, if it's the contractor working there, I think it's kind of confined everything to a closer area, you just watch that they don't park the equipment towards the corners of each street. That's the issues I have with the parking itself. I'll yield a floor to my other colleagues on that piece alone, if they have any questions about where the equipment's being parked overnight, even the weekends or holidays.
Sure. Yeah, well, as you mentioned, it is easier to leave the equipment near the job site so we can quickly, so we can get out of the job site area even quicker, but that's a good point. I'll talk to our supervisor in charge of the Deverell Cruise in Everett, Andrew Joseph, and make sure that we're, you know, sensitive to at least the, you know, areas near the intersecting streets to make the turns early easier.
Even like the holiday weekends coming up?
Sure.
We got two left. If maybe they could pull the equipment, the back holes and the SWAT trucks itself off the street for the long weekend?
Yes.
Leave the pipe there maybe with the trailer?
We can do that.
And then bring it back on that Monday?
Yeah.
Just to give the residents, because they have company coming with Christmas and New Year's and, you know, New Year's, things could get damaged also.
We might be suspending work during that week anyway, but I'll find out, but certainly for the whole weekend.
Okay.
Well, the long weekends this year.
Correct.
We can make that happen, yes.
So, you're thinking there'll be no work today after Christmas that week, you shutting down?
We might be. I'm not, I don't think that's been, that decision's been made, a final decision on that yet.
Okay.
But that's a possibility, but at least for the weekend, you know, from Friday through two, well, starting back on Tuesday.
Correct.
Both long weekends, I can make sure all the equipment's out of those areas.
All right, thank you.
And we can leave the pipe if that's okay, we'll secure it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
May other colleagues have any questions on that piece?
Counselor McGlaughlin, then Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I think this was a great piece that Counselor Delasola put on. I know a few years ago, by the street I live off of Baldwin Ave had done work over the winter, and unfortunately that winter, we had got hit with a lot of snow, so the work had got suspended. They left their equipment on Baldwin Ave, maybe five or six parking spots for the duration of the winter, and it became a real public nuisance. Because you couldn't plow the street correctly, you couldn't get down the street with a plow, you couldn't get down the street, it's salted, obviously, the parking spots were taken up for the duration of the winter, it was a whole winter project. I don't think that we'll have that problem in the future, because I know that we all are in close contact with you again, and I know that you are always on top of these issues. But just to keep it in mind, in the contractor's mind, that it is a residential neighborhood, parking is extremely tight in our city as it is, and with snow, it's even worse. If they know of a snowstorm, is there regulations or rules put in place that they follow that if there's a blizzard coming or a significant snowstorm coming, that they go out and remove equipment?
Yes.
Is that twenty-four hours before the storm, or because that is...
Certainly before the storm hits, yes, we do, we do remove all of our equipment from the worksite if a storm is, you know, especially a significant storm.
Okay, and I remember last winter, we had an issue in front of sixty-sixth Main Street that you and I were able to resolve the day of a snowstorm with the truck that was blocking partial entrance of that facility. And you got removed immediately, so I want to thank you publicly for that on that day. But if the contractor can just keep in mind that it is a residential neighborhood, and summer conditions and winter conditions are completely different on these streets in our city, and most of them are tight as it is in July, never mind in January and February when there's, you know, six inches or a foot of snow on the ground. But I do want to thank you for always being accessible to all of us here in the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Cameron, to the indulgence of our president, there's a couple of streetlights out, I just want to mention if that's okay through two.
If you would provide him a note would be great, but if you feel you must, please be brief.
I had the opportunity not to speak with him tonight, but at the end of Waters Ave at Main Street, there were two streetlights out, and they've been out for a couple of years now, according to the residents. Now, and the other question I have, I know you're here for this removal of equipment, but are you still doing an ongoing streetlight, burnt-out streetlight replacement program?
Yes, we are.
Okay, good. You did a great job on the parkway, and we appreciate that.
Same with, same with all the main streets, you know, Broadway, Main Street.
And the side streets, too.
Right.
Okay, great. That's good news to hear, you know, it gets darker earlier now, and I didn't realize how dark certain sections of the city were, Mr. President, but when you have a streetlight out, it really can impact the neighborhood for safety concerns.
Counselor, that was Warner's, you said?
Waters Ave?
Oh, Waters, 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 I'm sorry.
At the intersection of Main Street.
Okay.
This was just brought to my attention about a week ago. I knew you'd be here tonight, and Counselor Delasola was kind enough to let me interject this information to you, and I appreciate any work that you can do on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Counselor Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't going to say anything except that Mr. Matuski just reminded me, and I don't like to do that, because of the fact that he reminded you that there was a street out, actually, you should have never had to do that. You should know that. The street should, those lights should be repaired. I don't know places where there are lights out almost a year, and no one pays any attention to it. I'm not even going to tell you where they are. If you want to know, give me a call, but not here. Because I never, I've asked three times what to be repaired. Nothing has been done about it, okay? We shouldn't have to ask you to repair streetlights.
Yeah.
I mean, they're all over the city, and you guys are supposed to take care of them. It's getting as bad as double poles.
We're really starting to get off track here, counselors.
Yes, I know.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll just address...
Counselor Delasola?
Thirty-three.
Yes. Did you read item thirty-three?
I read, I read. Sorry, counselors, I read both, so you could take them collectively, as you asked. Yep, they're, they're right.
The winter work coming up. And last year, we had Ferry Street going on.
Right.
Broadway's going on right now.
Yep.
Can you, if you have a list for us now, or provide us with a list?
Sure, we have, as you know, Broadway, we also have, you know, down, you know, Broadway at the casino site. We're actually working on reinforcing the line for their permanent service. So, we'll be down there probably for at least the next couple of months. And then, we also have some electric work that's going to start on along Bow Street, which will be done during the day.
Okay.
We do need to cross Broadway with an electric conduit, that'll be done at night. We also have some work that's going to start over in Santilli Circle, all right, because when Santilli Circle's going to have some traffic management improvements done to it, we want to get some conduits to that circle across over to the Gateway Mall to kind of make a big loop, you know, within the city. So, we have a contractor on board that's getting ready to start that work. It'll be done during, at night during the winter, all right? I think the question was asked where the equipment, we're hoping to park the equipment right in the circle, you know, we'll restore it and all, but it's going to be, it's going to have some improvements done by the...
Right.
It's part of the wind project anyway. So, that's, that's to do with the Broadway and Santilli Circle. We also have work going on on Upland Road, which should be done by the end of next week. We have work on Belmont Park that's in progress, and we started it on December eighth, and we're expecting to run about three or four weeks. And then, there's several other streets that are in the list when these others are done, because we only put, you know, we put less crews on during the winter, but those streets are Lind Street, Cortland Road, Glad Hill Ave, Morris and Morris Street.
That's all gas work?
All gas work.
Okay, and you'll pass letters out and all that stuff?
Yeah, we do go through the normal notification procedure, if the work ends up getting, when it gets scheduled, you know, but we'll have to see how the winter goes.
Okay. And the last question I have, it's kind of related to this, the trench going down Broadway, can we just keep a good eye on that for the winter?
Yes.
Because you know it's going to be kicking up, and everybody goes up and down Broadway all day long.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Anybody else has any more questions?
Motion made and seconded to excuse Mr. Cameron. Any, all those in favor, I apologize.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. What's your pleasure, Counselor Delasola?
I'm prepared back to sponsor. Pleased with the answers.
Counselor, is that on both?
Yes, on both pieces, yes.
And I would just recommend that we have to accept the communication, place on file, it's a committee report.
Motion made and seconded to accept the reports on both items, place on file, and to refer back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Is there any other items on the signing sheet, Counselor DeFlorio? Okay, back to regular business. Item five, making progress.
Yes, Counselor. They have to be read by law, so...
Suspend the rule and take items twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take items twenty-six and twenty-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. If you could read them, Mr. Clerk, and then explain the situation here.
Yep. Item number twenty-six, Mr. President, is a special city council and public hearing report on an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to vote on the minimum residential factor in order to determine the percentages of local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property. Item number twenty-seven is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to vote on adopting a residential exemption for the annual property tax levy. We do not need to vote favorably on these, they were voted on at the last meeting, we successfully voted on these, we did not have the public hearing correctly because of, it was not posted in the newspaper. Public hearing was done tonight, these need no action, so I would just state, needs no action, and we'll move on from there. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to refer both of these back to the clerk. All in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you. Are we reverting back to five?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number five, Mr. President, is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to accept $1,000 from Everett Car Service and $2,500 from Snitzer Steel Industries. These gifts will be used during the holiday season to purchase toys for the annual toy drive.
Move to accept the donations and a letter of thanks be sent? Motion made and seconded to accept the donations and send a letter of thanks. All in favor?
These are, what is, Mr. President?
Roll call, I apologize, it's an order.
That's okay.
Sorry, it's roll call.
I heard a favorable action, no second, I didn't know if it was already done. Thank you.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio? Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor Napolit, excuse me, Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli? And President DePiero?
Yes.
That would be nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item number six.
Item number six, Mr. President, is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president that the following DPW vehicles, a nineteen ninety-six Caterpillar forklift, a two thousand ten Ford Taurus, a two thousand Chevrolet thirty-five hundred pickup truck, and a two thousand seven Dodge Charger police vehicle be declared surplus.
Suspend Rule thirteen? Is that a favorable action as well? Motion made and seconded to suspend Rule thirteen and take favorable action. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli? President DePiero?
Yes.
That would be eight yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item eight.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm going to step out of the room for items eight and nine, as my wife is on the Board of Trustees for the library.
Thank you, counselor.
Item number eight is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to appoint Michaela Schlossberg to the Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term expiring December twenty twenty.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin? Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli? And President DePiero?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item nine.
Item number nine is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to appoint Samantha Lambert to the Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term expiring December twenty twenty.
Second motion. Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli? And President DePiero?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item ten.
Item number ten, Mr. President, is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as president to accept donations of $200 from Jack McGrath and $10,000 from Lester Morvitz to be deposited into the city of Everett's Human Services Donation Account.
Favorable action? Accept donation with a letter of thanks be sent? Motion made and seconded to accept the donation and for a letter of thanks be sent. Before the clerk calls the roll, I just want to express the city's gratitude to these two gentlemen, they are constantly donating money to the city, and I also want to express our sympathy. Mrs. Morvitz passed away a few weeks back. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Item number ten. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli? And President DePiero?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item 11.
Item number 11. Is an order offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to accept donations from Jim and Carmella Marchant of five $20 McKinnon gift card, McKinnon, McKinnon's butcher shop gift cards, and from Tony and Linda DeSalvatore, four $25 gift cards from Target to be used during the holiday season.
Accept donation and letter of thanks.
Thanks, Jack.
Motion made and seconded to accept the donation and a letter of thanks be sent. Please call the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counseler Del Solo?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli? President DePiero?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item 12.
Item number 12. Thank you. Item number 12 is an order offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to grant a redemption center license to Lee Redemption, Lee Redemption Center, Inc., at 74 Spring Street. Excuse me.
Chairman, is that a new license? Ask the question.
This is a new license or a renewal?
It is not. This is a current license.
Okay, is there a second? Motion favorable action? It's a current license, Counsel. It's a renewal. Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President, sorry. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counseler Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli? President DePiero?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays.
Has passed. 13.
Item number 13 is an order offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to grant a license for a Class II motor vehicle dealer license to Everett Auto Gallery at 1993 Riviera Beach Parkway.
Favorable action on the order.
Second, if all papers are in order?
They are in order.
Second.
Counselors?
Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli? President DePiero?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
That order has passed.
Mr. Chairman, can we take items 14, 15, 16, and 17? These are all renewals for lodging house license collectively.
Motion made and seconded to take items 14 through 17 collectively?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Chairman, sue you while they're all papers are in order.
Yes, they are.
Second motion.
And they're all the same business owner.
Favorable, whatever, did anyone?
He has to read them.
I have to read them first.
Go.
Yes, I have to read them first, and then you can.
Okay, go ahead.
Item number 14 is an order offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to grant the renewal of a lodging house license to the Glendale at 322-324 Ferry Street. Item 15 is an order offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to grant the lodging house license renewal for the Marrow at 51 Chelsea Street. Item number 16 is an order offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to grant the renewal petition for a lodging house license for the Newport at 59 Chelsea Street. And item number 17 is an order offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to grant the petition of a renewal for a lodging house license for 450 Ferry Street Realty Trust at 450 Ferry Street.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Second.
Motion was made and seconded for favorable action. On the motion, Counsel McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if this is the time or not, but do we get an incident report? I know it comes out once a year. Do we get one before we?
We have in the past. It's been a while, though.
Yep, they just sent it to me. I want to say on Friday. I have them for you. I did not have it with me.
Did you have it?
There were no, no serious incidences here. I will, I will be issuing it to you because we have other lodging houses that have a little bit more, but you will get it. These, these four have no incidences. Two of them, I believe, are vacant at the moment because they're renovating, so, I mean.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Just, just so you know.
Counsel DeFlorio?
That was my question, to see if we had any problems. Because from now on, if we, we do have problems at any of these lodging houses, I'm definitely voting against it.
Yep, and I will be issuing them quarterly like we were before. They, I got you one in September. It's the time now, so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have a question, Counsel Capone? Motion was made for favorable action on both and seconded on all of the items, I should say. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
When you do these collectively?
Yes.
On all items. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli? President DePiero?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President, you have passed all four.
All orders have passed. Item 18.
Item number 18, Mr. President, is an order offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to renew for a motor vehicle dealer license and name change to Casino Auto Sales from Crimson Auto at 163 Ferry Street. Before you, before you pass it, one, it's only a name change, so it's still the same owner, it's still Mr. Marchese. I would, if you're going to issue it, issue it with the contingency that we are still missing the building report from them. They just haven't signed off. I'm pretty sure they already did, did the report, but I don't have the sign off, so I would request that you give them the license.
Pending the building.
Pending that I receive the report from the Building Department that they're still allowed to use as, as it is. Please.
So, we would vote a favorable, favorable action?
Yep.
With the clause that he has to have a final signature from the Building Department?
Before the city clerk issues the license.
Before the city clerk issues the license.
I'll make that a form of motion.
Thank you.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
On the motion, how long does that go into play for? How long is the clause, is the renewal good for if he doesn't receive the building department?
He, he has until the end of January, so he has plenty of time to issue me that report. I know the Building Department's been a little busy and backed up, so I, I just don't know if they didn't come down. I don't know the full situation, so I would just issue it that way, and then I can always bring it back before you if there is an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Favorable action of the piece as qualified? Counsel Hanlon?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of information, changing the name to the Casino Auto, I'm opposed to that and opposed to any other company in the city of Everett changing their name to Casino Anything. Is this a jump on and we're going to have to do with Casino all over the city of Everett? I'm not in favor of that kind of a thing. That's my only feel. You call the roll.
Is there a second on Counsel Capone's motion? Favorable action pending, pending the, yes. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Yes. Mr. President, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
No.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli?
None.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
That would be seven ayes, two nays, Mr. President, you have passed the order as with the restrictions. Thank you.
Item 19 is next.
Mr. President, if we could take items 19, 20, 21, 23, 24 collectively?
Can you just repeat those one more time, Counsel?
Sure.
Items number 19, 20, 21, 23, and 24.
We could take those items collectively.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to take items 19, 20, 21, 23, 24 collectively. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Please. Got to read them first, Counselor.
Okay. Item number 19, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Peter Napolitano at the request of businesses in Everett Square that the Everett Police or Parking Enforcement increase patrols in the Everett Square, on, in Everett Square on Saturday mornings to reduce illegal parking and congestion on the streets and parking lots around the square. Item number 20, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Peter Napolitano in the interest of public safety that the animal control services be expanded to address a wider range of animal issues in the community. Item number 21 is a resolution offered by Counsel Seminelli to request the mayor's chief of staff, Kevin O'Donnell, appear at the next Public Service Committee meeting for an update on progress of the memorial benches up and down Broadway to represent and honor past city government, fire, police, and loved ones from Everett. Item number 23 is a resolution offered by Counsel Richard Del Solo to invite a representative from Lime Bike Company to explain why all these new bikes are all over the streets. Item number 24 is a resolution offered by Counsel John Leo McKinnon to invite the mayor's office, designees from the chief of police, the police patrolmen, Superior Union, and reps from the auxiliary police to the next Public Safety Committee on, to begin talks on moving forward with a plan for all work, all to work together to move the city forward.
Accept the committee report, refer back to sponsor. Motion was made and seconded, Counsel DeFlorio?
I just want the people hearing this. The reason why a lot of this stuff is being referred back to sponsors is because it's the end of the year and we don't have time to act on it.
Yes.
Is that correct? End of term, I'm sorry.
Counsel Napolitano?
Actually, that's, I'll do respect to my colleague, that's not the case in all these cases. The instance regarding Everett Square, the Everett Police have stepped up the, their, their attendance on Saturdays. The business owners are content that they're, they're moving cars along. In the interest of the, the animal control services, we'll re, re-explore this in the spring, but there has been some discussion with the administration about expanding those services.
Motion was made and seconded to accept the reports, place on file, and refer back to sponsor on all of those items. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 22.
Item number 22, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Fred Capone that members of the community dad appear before the Public Safety Operations Committee to discuss their safety concerns in the city of Everett.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee met with representatives from, from different groups within the community. As you know, for months, we've had individuals come before this council during public participation, express their concern about DACA and TPS, and although that's at the federal level, we can only do so much with that. At the local level, we have a little bit more of leeway, so we've all happily approved the, the resolution going forward on the federal level. And what we've done at the local levels, we had these folks come to the committee so we could actually finally have some meaningful conversation. And it was, it was an excellent meeting, and the recommendations that came out of the committee is that what was coming forth from the community is that folks were fearful. They were afraid to contact the police department. They were afraid to report crime, and unfortunately, that affects all of us. If people aren't reporting crimes for whatever reason, we're all at risk. So, one of the things that we talked about was opening the lines of communication. The police department is already doing a wonderful job of going into the schools, doing a nice job of going into places of worship, so we want to ask the police department to continue to do that, and that's, for that part, we're referring it to the police chief to continue those efforts and to reinvigorate the crime watch within the city. The other thing that we'd like to do is to refer to the mayor's office and ECTV that perhaps we establish some sort of programming at the local level where folks from different groups can come forth, maybe have a spokesperson, have some form of programming where they invite members of the police department, invite members of city government to explain, you know, what the enrollment is, how we all work on this together, how we're in this community together, and that there shouldn't be fear to contact the police department, that if you report a crime, it does not mean that you're going to be deported, that you're going to be handed over to ICE, that we need to make our community safe. So, that's what came out of that committee meeting. I, I think it was wonderful. We'll continue to work on it in the new year, but I would like to accept the committee report and make those referrals out, the police department and to the mayor's office and ECTV.
Motion was made and seconded to refer the item to the chief of police, the mayor's office, and ECTV with Counsel Capone's request. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, can we take items 28, 29, 30, and 31 collective?
Second motion. Motion made and seconded to take items 28 through 31 collectively. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Please read them, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number 28, Mr. President, is an order offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to grant the petition for AT&amp;T for work to be done at 94 Pearl Street. Item number 29 is an order offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to grant the petition for AT&amp;T for 17 Christina Circle. Item number 30 is an order offered by Counsel, Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to grant the petition from AT&amp;T for work to be done at 12 Victoria Street. And item number 31 is an order offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to grant the petition from AT&amp;T for work to be done at 26 Gladstone Street.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the committee report and we allow the petition of the right to withdraw these pieces without prejudice.
Mr. Chairman, that's withdraw without prejudice.
Motion made and seconded to accept these reports and allow the petitioner to withdraw without prejudice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 34.
Item number 34 is an order, ordinance offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero as president to amend Chapter 12 licenses and business regulations of the revised ordinances of the city of Everett by adding the following new section, 12-12 Marijuana Establishments Forbidden.
Second motion. Motion made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll.
Just so you know, you're voting on enrollment this evening.
Yes.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Seminelli? And President DePiero?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President, you have enrolled.
Has been enrolled.
Number 35, Mr. President, is an off, is a resolution offered by Counsel Seminelli to have the director of parking permits research the two-week and one-month parking permits to see if they're able, are being abused with a request for a written report back to the council next meeting.
Counsel Matuski on Counsel Seminelli's behalf?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell's here to speak on this matter?
Can I report?
Okay.
Good evening, Kevin O'Donnell, chief of staff, Mayor D. Maria. Yes, Counsel, with respect to this, I, we haven't fully committed to writing because we have been a lot stricter in the past year. They, residents now need to produce a current utility bill from the address as well as a from the address as well as a valid registration. If there is fraud committed, the penalty is a one-year revocation of the placard privileges and/or a steep fine, which we have followed through with both at a more excelled pace in the last year. But what we want to really do is, we're currently meeting and having discussions with the city solicitor and the parking enforcement group as well, because some of the snags that we run into are cars that are leased and are registered to an LLC or a corporation or stuff like that. So, we have to find stopgap mechanisms to make sure that they're legitimately here for either residence permit or if we can find mechanisms for these to, you know, assure on temporary passes what the reasoning behind it would be. So, you know, we need to really kind of revamp some things with that, because those are variables that really weren't in effect in a big way when we first started with the sticker program.
You didn't find any abuse, Mr. O'Donnell?
Nothing blatant, no. I mean, if there's abuse reported, we always follow up and do an investigation, but there was nothing, they've been more in tune with identifying these issues and pulling the placards or finding them. But we realize there's still more work to be done with respect to that, in terms of people coming in.
The councilman suggested is he'll reintroduce this in 2018.
Sure.
That'd give you plenty of time to work on the.
Oh, that'll give us more than enough time, absolutely.
And just from my own point of view, how, if somebody's visiting, how would they have an electric bill?
Yes, that's the part, that's where it gets convoluted with the visiting piece. We're revamping, well, not revamping, but we're paying closer attention to the whole process with that. But we do, the visiting placards are becoming an issue because of the residency and where these cars are registered to or the reasoning for kind of being down there. I mean, are they here working and staying with a relative for a month, or, you know, all these variables that enter into the equation when people are requesting these. I mean, we've had some issues where we know that it was easy to legitimize because there were visiting nurses that were doing overnight care for residents and things of that. So, we just really have to fine tune what the reasonings would be behind these things. And that gets a little difficult, too, because if someone is, you know, has a car that's registered to a corporation in Boston, it's feasible that they are, you know, they are staying with someone while they're working in there.
And, you know, they're visiting somebody. I, you know, I have company periodically and they got a visitor's pass. My sister was in from California and so forth. But the other thing that I have a personal issue with is, I'm not sure, I have had reports of, out of one residence or one apartment, however you want to put it, that there was multiple, up to seven, eight, maybe more, I mean, permits for one unit. Now, that's probably on top of the people actually living or renting the apartment out. But that's, you know, that's a red flag. I mean, that must be able to be popped up out of the spreadsheet computer thing.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and I just know in past conversations and everything, they're trying to limit that, and they wouldn't normally, and we would frown upon giving like seven or eight at a time, because then.
Well, that's the problem.
That raises a flag, that would raise a flag to anybody.
So, that's something we're interested in addressing and correcting, because Francis Street, Irving Street, packing is very limited, and those are what two of the complaints came from, from me. The Councilman Simonelli has issues in Wood, too. But we're going to revisit this whole, you know, maybe we could.
And just know that when these, situations like that are reported, we would look into it, whether it be with parking enforcement or Special Services Division.
So, if there are residents out there watching this program tonight, this council meeting, that think that there's some abuse going on, they call, who do they call?
They could call parking enforcement or 311.
311 and state their concern, and you could look into that?
Yeah, we would follow through, yeah, with any concern, we would all absolutely follow through with, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the help.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is an easy fix. I'm sorry. As far as the visiting nurses, that's different. They have a license, they're going to visit a patient, but anybody else that wants a permit, it's a visitors', why can't they get a permit from the landlord? I mean, if I'm a landlord and I don't live there, and they have somebody living there that I don't know about that's constantly getting the visitors' permit, I don't know about it. So, why can't they get the okay from the landlord for the visitors' permit?
Well.
Not the tenant.
I mean, these are all issues that we're going to try to identify, which is going to best serve us.
Yeah, we have identified that, because what happens is, if you have someone that has a six-family home in Everett and lives in Linfield, he doesn't know if there's other people living there. And they're coming out to get permits, residential permits, because they don't know people living there. This even helps the landlord out to let them understand that there's people that shouldn't be living there. So, I think we have to look into that. I've been saying this for a long time, so. All right, thank you.
Excuse me, thanks.
Thank you. On behalf of Councilman Simonelli, we want to thank you for being here.
All right, thank you, folks.
Councilor DeCaprio, thanks. Mr. President, Councilman Simonelli is inclined to reintroduce this piece to 2018, so we'd like to refer that.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to refer the piece back to sponsor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item thirty-six.
Item number thirty-six, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilors Capone, McGlaughlin, and Napolitano that DCR consider a more permanent solution to the present arrangement at the intersection of Gladstone Street and Riviera Beach Parkway Route Sixteen in order to promote the safety of residents and schoolchildren in the area.
Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, even despite our best efforts locally with the temporary solution that we've put there, it continues to be a dangerous situation. There seems to be a little bit of communication, confusion between DCR and the local level. My understanding is that DCR wanted a little bit more input from our traffic commission in terms of what we're looking for, for a permanent structure. So, I know our State Senator, Sally D'Amico, and our State Rep, Joe McGonigal, they're helping us with this regard. I know my colleagues have been working hard on this. So, we're going to refer this back to sponsor. We will reintroduce it in 2018 and try to get a permanent resolution over there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion made and seconded to refer back to sponsor, with the understanding it will be reintroduced in the new session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item thirty-seven.
Item number thirty-seven, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Matusky and Councilor Simonelli that the Mayor's Office consider placing the brass plaque honoring Edward M. Hogan and Park Commissioners at the, at first Glendale Park dedication in appropriate location in Glendale Park at the family's request.
Councilor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilman Simonelli and myself, we happened to meet with a family member of this gentleman, Edward Hogan. It's my understanding he was a farmer alderman, and then after he retired from city government, he was a park commissioner at the first dedication of Glendale Park, which, what year it was, I really don't know. But the man went down to the Department of Public Works and he physically saw the sign that was there with the other members of the park commissioner for Glendale Park. It was the first dedication, I believe. And it turns out that after talking to the man, he, this Mr. Edward Hogan, was the grandfather of the former late great state representative, Billy Hogan. So, with that, you know, the family has been part of this community for many years, and the park has been rededicated at the recent opening three years ago. But there is a plaque, it's at the city yards. The Director of the Department of Public Works, Mr. Navarro, knows about this, Navarro, excuse me. And I did speak briefly with the Chief of Staff, O'Donnell. So, they just want a small dedication, just put that plaque back somewhere in an appropriate spot. So, on behalf of Councilman Simonelli, we'd like to refer this to Director Navarro and Chief of Staff O'Donnell for sometime next year they could place that plaque in a spot that's appropriate at Glendale Park. Thank you.
Second motion. Motion made and seconded to refer the item to Chief of Staff O'Donnell and Director Navarro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, please, if you're going to take items thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty collectively?
Motion made and seconded to take items thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty collectively. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number thirty-eight, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor John Leo McKinnon that the newly hired clinician, Executive Director of Health and Human Services, and Program Coordinator for the opioid task force come before the city council to update the city council on their progress and new initiatives throughout the city at our last meeting in December. Item number thirty-nine, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor John Leo McKinnon to have the Chiefs of Fire and Police, along with both union presidents and representatives from Wind Boston Harbor, to discuss the possibility of having a manned public safety room on the casino property. I would like them to attend the December twenty-sixth meeting. Item number forty, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor John Leo McKinnon that the mayor appear at this meeting, December twenty-sixth, to discuss the bus lane for utilizing it for the possibility of having some type of transportation from the city of Everett to the Wind Casino for our residents to utilize. This would be to see the feasibility of said plan or to propose this idea.
Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. At the request of the sponsor, moving that the piece be referred back to sponsor, to be reintroduced in 2018.
Alfred? Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to refer these three back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I wish everybody a merry Christmas.
No, this is the last one, the floor.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask that members, I'm sure, we're, this is our last meeting for the Christmas holiday. Of course, Hanukkah, I believe, starts tomorrow, so we'd like to, I think it would be appropriate, as we have in the past, to go around the room. Having suggested, I will not go first, but if we could go by ward, you know, I think everybody would like to express their greetings to the residents.
Just go around in a circle if that's easiest for everyone. Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to wish a very happy and healthy holiday season to everyone and a happy and healthy new year.
Whatever he says. No, I'd like to also express the same concern that I do hope everybody has a nice, healthy, healthy, healthy new year, great Christmas time, best time of the year there is for me anyway. Happy Christmas, Merry Christmas to everybody here and to our citizens.
Want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and enjoy your family.
Thank you.
I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the residents of Everett and to wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season. I want to also thank my colleagues here on the city council. We've had a great productive year, really enjoyed serving with each and every one of you members, and look forward to the next two years, doing a lot of good for the people of Everett. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilman Simonelli and Councilman Wayne Matusky, we'd like to thank the people who actually voted for us in this last election. And as Councilman Hanlon stated, health is very important. I hope it's a healthy and a good year and prosperous year for this community. Thank you.
I'd like to wish the residents a very Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, and a Happy New Years. You know, cities moving in a great direction, and I wish everyone prosperity and good health.
I'd like to wish my colleagues in the entire city of Everett a very, very Merry Christmas and a very healthy and Happy New Year.
Me as well. I'd like to wish all of you folks and the residents of Everett a very Merry Christmas, happy and healthy holiday season and New Year. I also want to thank the residents and business owners who continuously show the generosity through the toy drives that many members of this community do, the work that Human Services does, and so on. So, thank you all.
Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. The same, I want to wish all of you here in City Hall, the city council a very happy and healthy New Year and all the residents of Everett. Thank you very much.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Go Patriots.